Regular session at 7:00 PM that will start and the community has an opportunity two times during that meeting to be able to address the council on these issues or anything else that they would like to bring up to council. So with that, I'll hand it off to staff unless we have anything else from city managers.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Welcome to the work session on the status of the water, wastewater and drainage utilities. You can see on our first slide our work session objectives. Basically, we want to update you on the financial status of each of the respective utilities, what our revenue and expense trends have been over the past few years, outline the system needs, basically what the ongoing capital needs are, and then any proposed rate adjustments that we're going to be coming to you with. And basically, what we're looking for tonight is not necessarily any kind of a motion but a consensus so that we know what to bring back in form of resolution in probably June, I would guess, after the budget hearing committee. With that, we'll get started on it. We're going to start with water, but at any point in time, feel free to stop us, ask questions. We've got lots of information to cover, so at any point in time, feel free to cover it for us. First thing on the water system, you can see that in your council packet, there was a memo that we put together. We used numbers basically based on our Spring Brook system with the financial piece of it, and we since went back and kind of updated that according to the budget comps. It's a little easier to understand, the trends are the same, so there really wasn't a lot of change there. So, and your water system trends, basically, this is system, how the system runs. You can see from the past few years, we haven't really grown a lot in meters, averaging probably close to 100 a year, somewhere in that neighborhood on growth. We did see a spike this year in produced water from last year, close to, it looks like about 50 million gallons difference. We're still not real sure what to attribute that to. It's possible we have some more leaks that have sprung. I know that we found one as we were doing the Filbert Street Sewer, we found multiple leaks on the existing water line that's there. Our maintenance crews have been out fixing a lot of that, and we'll probably end up trying to replace that line in-house. And I know that we have others out there, and the only time we really find them is when they surface. So, this one hadn't surfaced, but it did make some pretty good pockets underground where the surfaces were leaking old cast lines and cast surfaces, so we're working on that. The other two pretty critical numbers to take away from this are the one-day max demand and three-day max demand. One-day max demand is just what it is. That was the one day last year where we had the biggest water usage, where we produced the most water, 3.4 million gallons. The three-day max demand is basically that day and the prior day and the day thereafter divided by those three days, which looks like we ran pretty close to 3.4 million gallons those three days. Why is that critical? Our plant's rated at 3.8 million gallons right now. Can we make more than that? Yes, we can, but it's not DHS rated for that. So, it's, I guess the best analogy is to use, you don't run your car at 5,000 RPMs and probably don't want to run a water plant at that pace as well. So, that's why those two numbers are pretty critical. I think we covered the leaks. One thing that staff is doing, we track unaccounted-for water loss, and that kind of goes into what we attribute to, you know, water that we don't know where it goes, whether it be leaks, whether possibly theft at times or just other uses, you know. We don't track a whole lot of the fire department uses. So, we're going to jump back on that a little bit, and since we are seeing an uptick in the amount of water we're producing, and make sure that we don't have major leaks somewhere in our system, that we can get our unaccounted-for water loss. Maybe a little bit better number than what we've got. I mean, we're averaging 20% right now. DHS would like to see us about 10%. So, we're going to work on that and see where that leads us as we have time and as staff has time to do that.
How do other municipalities far aside figure on that part?
Albany, probably about 20%. You know, I haven't really checked into a whole lot of it.
What is it, not well?
No, it's not out of line. It's DHS, like I said, would like to see a 10 or below. Is that practical? Depends on how much money you want to put into your system, you know. I mean, we could go out and replace every line, every service in town, and by the time we got that done, we'd probably be still sitting about somewhere at 15% and not really have, the bang for the buck probably wouldn't be there. But if we do have some major leaks, we want to know about it, and there's ways that we can find those. It costs a little bit of money, but we want to make sure that that's actually what the case is as opposed to the fire department's using more water. We've had a project that used 2 million gallons to blow off a water line, and it just didn't get accounted for. You know, we've got meters that are out there, hydrant meters that people are using that we didn't get plugged into our system. We just want to make sure that that's not the case before we put money into it.
Were you sure that in the late 90s, it was considerably higher loss?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it's not, I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about. It's definitely something that we want to keep on top of. Obviously, we don't want to make 20% of our water and have it gone, you know, but I don't think that that's totally the case. So, we'll continue to work on that as time allows. So, moving on, that's the trends. You can see our major water projects, what we've been doing. Basically, the Industrial Way Water Line up around the Rick Franklin Yard, that installed 16-inch water line up there, which was a big piece to make a connection to head towards the southeast end of town. And then you can see the others. We've got a lot of future projects. I think the one that really sticks out to me right now, just in line replacement, is we've taken a look at what we have for lines to replace that basically are going to be needed for upgrade due to pressure, or they're undersized, or we know they have major, major leaks on them. And we've looked at that, and it's about $6 million over the next 10 years. The good news of that is it's within our budget to do that with the way we're headed here. So, it's not an unattainable goal, and it's not just a number that's thrown out there. And we tried to pick lines that we knew were definite replacements, and not necessarily every line we could think of that needed to be replaced, but these would be our priority lines, and that is achievable over the next 10 years, I believe. We're close to that. So, that's that. And then, of course, the big one is the water treatment plant. Why a new water treatment plant? And I know we have new councilors and new mayor, and I want to, I kind of want to go through this again, why we're looking at a new water treatment plant. The existing one was built in 1946, a new PP&amp;L system. They ran them hard and sold them, got the best they could out of them, and they didn't do a lot of maintenance to them. They passed them on to cities throughout the valley, and now cities that have them are getting to replace them. Like I said, it's rated at 3.8 million gallons a day, so we're reaching capacity. I think when we started the process to build a new water treatment plant, our growth, what we were looking at growth-wise as a community, it was probably bigger then. We've kind of slacked off in that respect as far as what we're needing, but nonetheless, we're still reaching that capacity issue. It's got various issues with it, and they all relate back to risk management and what, how much risk do we want to take on and, you know, the aging pieces to this thing. The Excelator's a big one. That's the big round tank that basically filters out all the pretty, the mud, the larger particles before it goes into the filters. If the gear on that were to break, it's hard to say how long it would be before we could get it back up and running. I don't think we've got enough storage currently to do that. Now, is it going to break? I hope not. We don't see any signs of it breaking, but, you know, we take it down from time to time, and it definitely looks like stone age-type construction, and it's time for replacement. Clearwell, that's where the water's stored after it's run through the finished water filters, basically where your chlorine contact time comes from. It's about half the size that it needs to be for a plant rated at 3.8 million gallons. We've got video that we've seen where we've had a diver in there that can actually scratch the walls of the concrete in there, so the concrete walls are deteriorating. So, that's another good reason. The aging equipment. When we looked at building a plant, we looked at this site first, obviously, to see if there was a way that we could do it here. The site constraints are such that it would be, I won't say impossible, but it'd be pretty expensive to do. Basically, there's no redundancy in that existing plant other than the filter base, so how do you make water and build a new plant? And it probably involves bringing in a major package plant in the time, and those costs are big. So, once we looked at that, determined we don't have enough room to do that, we purchased the property out on River Road, and that's kind of where we're at today. That property's purchased, it's graded out and ready to be built on. So, that's kind of why we're looking at a new water treatment plant, and that's what the goal has been here for the last three, four years, and that's where we're headed. We're headed down that path. So, any questions there? Okay. Next is the water financial status. You can see, we're on track this year, fiscal year 2013, to collect the revenue that we projected and budgeted for. Revenue from the rate adjustments been mostly, I would say, gone to the capital program. It hasn't all been used, and we continue to put it away for reserve. It doesn't say reserve, but we're putting it away and reserving some of it for the treatment plant, for the connecting water lines to the treatment plant, and we're using it to replace water lines as we speak. Of course, every year, we have operations of the plant that they increase every year, usually. This year, we're looking at about a 3% increase. Most of that's attributed to power this year. We've worked with OMI to determine what those power costs are going to be, and I'm going to say they were about $30,000 or $40,000 more projected this year. And that's, a lot of that's attributed to the wastewater, but it all kind of gets lumped into the same category when we're doing this. But like I said, we are on track to collect what we budgeted, which this year was a 15% increase. So, actually, the status of that, the finances actually look pretty good, so. And then the one, everybody's favorite one, the proposed rate schedule. You can see what the rates have done. The last rate over there, 2014, is based on a 10% rate increase. Myself, Rob and Jason have looked at this in depth, and our last rate increase for this coming fiscal year was scheduled to be a 15%. After looking at it, looking at the construction trends and looking at what other communities are building new water plants for, I mean, it's not a total apples-to-apples comparison, but we feel that 10% is more in line with what we're seeing out there. So, we kind of gave a couple of options that could be done. You know, we can implement the 10% rate increase, we could do something less than a 10% rate increase, and then implement the rest of it. I am pretty confident that we'll have to implement something in order to move, have enough funds to support the debt service on a new water treatment plant. But, I mean, and we've talked internally, I think our recommendation for this year, if we were going to give a recommendation, would be that we probably wait, we hold off on that until we can get a little bit more of a, better handle on what the cost of that treatment plant's going to be. Number one, it doesn't impact anything that we're doing, operations, maintenance, or logistics-wise this year. We're still able to put money away, we're still able to do all the projects that we're doing and more. So, I don't see that as a big stumbling block, but I would say that at some point, we'll probably have to do that. We're also proposing no inflationary increase based on some of the staff reductions that we've had, so there's really no reason to do that either. So, what we would like is basically, you know, if council wants to give a consensus on how they feel about what they'd like to see staff bring back as far as any rate increase, if there is no rate increase, there's no reason for a resolution, so it would just stay the same, rates would stay the same. I think that's about the sum of it for the water utility. Questions?
Ron, I have a question. Having friends in the Crescent, Goshen area, and not Crescent.
Crestwell?
Crestwell.
Okay.
And the new system they put in.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in terms of millions of dollars, it was considerably less than our original forecast.
Yes.
I know the system's smaller, but do you foresee that our original, I guess, guesstimate for the building of that is not going to be that large?
We, so what we're basing this on is a $15 million bond sale. We're basing the $15 million bond sale to pay for A, a new water plant, upgrades to the reservoir on East Grant, and also demolition. The demolition piece hasn't really been talked about or factored into with our existing plant, and I'm not sure that we've really got a good handle on what those costs would be. So, there are some costs out there that we don't really know, but we're confident that the 15 million, based on what we're seeing in the plants that are relatively our size and with what the infrastructure that we need to build them, that's what we're looking at. Do I think it's going to come in cheaper? I wish I could tell you. I don't know enough about all the construction that's going to take place. I mean, we know what we need to build, but you start getting into the whole building aspect of it and the filtration system itself, and, you know, we're just going off of what we see in other communities do. It's a little bit outside our ARR there. Does that kind of answer it for you? Sort of?
Ron, what was the original price that all of these rates were based on? Was it 20 million?
Yeah, it was 25 million.
25?
25 million, so. And that's a good question. We haven't collected everything, so based on, I think we've been averaging about 13% or something like that.
Yeah, we've been, in the water system, we do a rate forecast every year, and we've been collecting about 90, on average, probably about 98% of what we have forecasted. So, several factors, probably conservation, people seeing the rates go up, so they turn the faucet down, take shorter showers. Just the opposite in wastewater, but we'll get to that in a minute. So, we're getting a little bit less revenue than what we've been forecasting, what we projected when we first started.
So, with that, and the reason for the reduction, we're able to use $5 million out of the Northwest URD, which is going to fund the Fifth Street Reservoir, which will be coming to council tonight for approval to award, and also, I think we budgeted almost $1 million towards the design of the new water treatment plant out of the Northwest URD. So, that's been a big thing there, you know. You figure about 20% of your initial cost, what does that factor back to in rates? I haven't really looked at that. I know we're on track, and that's, I think, you know, you get down to the core of it with Rob and Jason and I, we want to make sure that we're not, we want to see what that price is on that treatment plant before we pitch out another rate increase. I don't know what it's going to be. We're hoping for less, and everything we can do, we're going to make it less, but without really having a good handle on that, I think that that would probably be our recommendation until we know what we're going to actually build. And it doesn't impact anything, it's not going to slow the process down any, the speed at which we're going to get there is going to be the same as if we implemented a 10% rate increase tonight. So, I don't think it changes anything.
So, how large of an impact, Ron, would be if we looked at something less than 10% and something more than that after we have more information if needed in a year or two?
As far as if we, you mean if we skip the 10% or?
Well, say it was seven or eight or?
How much of an impact on rates would it have?
No, the impact on the project in terms of collected revenue.
I don't see any impact on the project. I mean, the project, we can't sell a bond until 2015. I don't have enough information to do that until I get there anyway. That's what, I guess that's probably why we've come to where we've at with our recommendation is there's really no reason to at this point until we know, even if the 10% was implemented tonight, we would still be selling the bond in the same timeframe because we wouldn't be ready with a consultant. There's about a year's worth of design to do probably, and that could be longer based on water quality studies that may need to be done, where we have to hit a fall and springtime water quality study. So, I'm not sure it impacts the project at all.
So, if we were not to implement the rate increase that's projected, what does that do to our bond rate come time for that?
I don't think it does anything. I think at some point, we will have to, and that would be probably next year, next fiscal year. But my thought would be that we would have a consultant on board here by July. We would have a fairly, maybe 50, 60% cost estimate on our treatment plant, not a conceptual design, and then we would know from there. I mean, we would know within, I mean, probably 20% of the construction cost of what that would be in order to have a bond sale. And at that time, we would probably make a recommendation that, you know, whatever that dollar amount is.
Just to add a little to that, yeah, selling a bond is, there's a lot of flexibility to that, both as far as the timing of when we sell the bond, and we don't have to have the revenues already in hand. What they're typically looked for is a 1.2% times whatever the debt service, so if you want to sell a $15 million bond, or $12 million, or $18 million, whatever that annual debt service is, they want to see 1.2% times that, or 1.25% or 1.25 times that in order to service the annual debt service. So, and they don't necessarily need to see that already in place, but they do need to see it in place by the time the bond debt service begins. So, we would usually have, you know, I'm going to guesstimate a little bit, probably a six-month window.
Yeah.
Might be a little more than that in which we can say, well, now we're pretty sure about the cost, now we know, and so we know what, how big the bond needs to be, or what are bond rates at the time, what are underwriting costs at the time, and therefore, here's how we need to adjust our rates in order that when we go out to the market, we can assure the market that we're going to be able to pay off those bondholders.
So, we have a little window here?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Yeah, I see it as a window. I think it allows us to get a little better handle on what that actual cost is going to be. We're basing it off of 15 million, as in a $12 million treatment plant, 3 million for the tank up there on East Grant. What it doesn't account for is whatever happens at that existing plant, and obviously, there's going to have to be some form of demolition over there, whether we take the buildings down or sell it as is, or whether we keep it. You know, there's obviously some stuff that has to go into that, but there again, we need a, probably a different type of engineer to take a look at that for us. I'm a simple engineer, so.
Ron, do you have any idea what the value of that property is?
I don't.
John, you have any?
You know, if everything is taken down, say you've got bare dirt, it's probably not a whole lot, could be, you know, I think optimistically, a couple of hundred thousand.
So, yeah, that would, how much do you want to put into that, you know, if they're taking it down, so. But I don't see it as a stumbling block. It wouldn't make us go, I mean, obviously, we could expedite, but I wouldn't recommend that, not on something this big. I think we want to do it right and make sure that we've got the right rate increase implemented and not something that we're kind of taking a stab at and going, okay, I think this is about what it is. And I mean, because all it is is comparisons to other cities and going, oh, we're about there, and this is about what we're doing. So, that's, that would be where we land on that.
Another question, then I'll be quiet. Is technology in terms of ultra-ray and any additional technology causing those systems to be less costly or?
No, the one thing I will tell you is that what we're finding, you know, with, we're talking about a pressure filter membrane system, there's probably four or five that I can think of off the top of my head that make that kind of a system. They're making the components of them a little more versatile to where you can put different types of filter arrays on them. So, I think once that happens, you know, you're going to get a manufacturer that's going to come in and manufacture those and be able to sell them cheaper. But for the most part, I don't think the costs have changed a whole lot. What's changed is construction and the amount of profit that contractors probably put on to this. It's very competitive out there, I mean, very competitive. So, it's a good time to do it. We're scrambling to get it done as fast as we can, so.
I was going to, I was just going to ask that same question.
I've got a couple of questions, Ron. New treatment plant, this last one, did I understand you say this was a used plant when the city installed it in 1946?
No, no, no.
It was just a design that was?
Yeah, it was built in 1946, and PP&amp;L owned and operated it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, that plant's been around 60-something years, and what's an estimate useful life on any plant, something comparable?
You know, I think you're looking at probably 75 years. What we're looking at is we're looking at a type of plant that you can, you know, for starters, let's use the number, we're going to use 6 million gallons, our capacity would be 6 million gallons. The nice thing about these filter membrane plants is the, it's basically mechanical, and you drop in a filter array, and you've got another million gallons. We'll size everything accordingly. Obviously, you can't build the 20 million gallon or whatever, I think our build-out was 14 million gallon. We can't build that piece right now, but we'll have the building size for that, and we'll do some stuff with the clearwells and stuff. There'll be a little bit of redundancy in them.
We can expand the capacity as necessary.
That's the idea, and that was the thinking when we bought the 10 acres out there, yes.
The bond life, what's the bond period we're talking about?
We're looking at a 20-year.
20-year bond?
Yes.
So, if we look at the cash flows of our rate increases and the cash flows of the bond costs and the present value of both those in comparison, I'm assuming that the cash flows of our rate increases will match the cash flow of the bond issue.
That's the idea, yes.
And so, at the end of 20 years, then we, unless we reduce the rates at that time, we've got surplus cash coming in from these rates?
Yeah, if you want to look at it like that, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Now, 20 years from now, I don't know if we could predict out that what inflation and everything's going to do. You know, maybe.
Well, but if we can't predict that far, then before 20 years is up, we're going to have to raise rates again to keep the bond paid.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, you're getting into a bond sale, and you've got that fixed.
Yeah.
Once that bond is sold, it's fixed.
We don't want to say that inflation shouldn't affect that.
No, it will not. It will not.
No, yeah, and I see what you're saying, yes, yes.
Okay, so, so really, the decision, the question that's going through my mind is that what we're seeing as a community is a major increase in rates because we didn't plan 25 years ago for this eventuality. And, you know, we've kind of had capital coming in as a budget, year to year to year, spent it and keep moving, and all of a sudden, boom, we've got. I would like to say, you know, that we need to take a look at a 75- to 100-year timeline for rates as we go forward here, understanding we may not have any choice right now, but maybe put some schedules in place for end of that bond life and say this is a little forecasting.
But this body only has a say on rates today.
I understand it. I'm not suggesting we can set the rates 20 years from now, but if we did some planning and said this is but if we did some planning and said, this is what the 100-year timeline might look like, then then council can look at that and say, okay, that makes sense. Here's some resources we can use in our thinking.
I agree. It's really frustrating to think about us being here and having to have gone through, you know, compressed.
Yeah.
The responsibility was, and hugely publicly unpopular. I mean, we've been, you know, it's been very difficult to answer to people to say, you know, hey, you know, the economy's bad and you're raising our rates this much. I mean, that is a really, that is a really difficult conversation I think we've all had with a lot of people. And it's hard to think, you know, 20 years ago, why weren't you acting? Why weren't you looking at when, you know, what was going to happen? And you want to scream at the people 20 years from now, look at it every year and plan. Right.
Like we're not going to be in 25 years from now. But if we do that, I think that might be a worthwhile project, not necessarily tonight or with this particular decision, but here in the near future to take a good hard look at that kind of a plan.
You and I will come and sit in the audience and, you know, when I was on council.
You know, I don't go back that far, but 12 years ago, when I was on council, we had discussions about water treatment plant and rates and, and as a council, then we made the decision to do some other things rather than put money away, such as Highway 34 and Tangent and Highway 20. We felt that was priority over the water treatment. Those were decisions leadership made at that time, and I think it's been fruitful. But now we have this obstacle.
Well, I, I think you're right, Councilor Reese Camp, on other options pursued at the time. And one of the other options that was pursued for about three years that people, I think, have pretty much forgotten about, was an option to not build a water treatment plant and see if we could find adequate well water. So we spent, was it about three years?
Yeah, we spent a lot of money chasing wells that never panned out.
Right, and, but if it had worked, you know, we could have, that would have been huge savings.
Yes, it would have been very big, yes.
One thing that council has done when we implemented the last round of rates is put in an inflationary index into the, into the resolution, into the ordinance, which hasn't been there in the past. So when we're done with this round of increases, those, every year, the rates will go up with, with the cost of living or the inflation, which, which won't, we won't be going backwards as we have gone, you know, that direction in the past. Keep the rates static, inflation costs go up, but rates stay the same. So that is, it's not, it doesn't address your concern exactly, but it's a step.
I just want to clarify, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I feel, a bit of criticism towards past councils. That's not the point. I'm suggesting that, you know, looking down the road long-term, you know, we can't accurately forecast every capital project that's going to come down the road. I mean, I don't know, you know, 25 years ago, anybody even dreamed about changing Highway 34. And looking forward, I'm not sure what's going to change. But, you know, we do things like TSPs and comp plans and things with a strong amount of energy towards looking down the road. I'm just saying, maybe, you know, we ought to do the financial thing in conjunction with what's in those projects and just forecasting there. And saying, okay, you know, looking way down the road, you know, let's see if we can even this out a little bit. We'll never get it perfect.
No, but I think if you're headed in that direction, that's, that's a good, and the inflationary index is, is part of that. And keeping up with those costs so that we're not coming in and, you know, every 10 years, oh my gosh, we've got to raise rates 20%.
To be hitting ourselves with a 10 or 15% rate change based on unforeseeables is a whole different animal than a 70 or 80% rate change because we didn't think about it at all.
And the reason that we didn't recommend an inflationary this year with the, with the staff reductions that we've seen this year, those are going to equate to more than what a, what an inflationary rate increase would be. So we just opted and not put that in there. It's still something council could obviously do, but.
Does it think that Ron will be disappointed without 15% increase?
Well, I don't, I don't know that they'll be disappointed. I, I mean, there will be, I, I'm pretty confident that there will be a rate increase in order to build this treatment plant. But I would feel more comfortable if we knew what that was before we, before we implemented it.
Another way of looking at it, if we go ahead and raise rates now and just bank that, then we get done a couple of years early, maybe.
That's possible.
Unless you ended up not needing that.
Yeah, and then when you've got extra, then.
Got extra, you know, pay it off and, and get done with that bond earlier, or, you know, at least have it available.
I'm never comfortable with government at any level saying, oh, we're going to have excess money. We're going to pay this debt off. Or there's a couple of other water lines we really want to do, you know. I'm never, I'm never comfortable with banks.
Not that you guys would do that at all.
No, no.
There are always more leaks.
Well, I certainly would like to see us try to do something that has less impact on our citizens here with this rate increase in July and possibly even next year. But I realize we do have a water treatment plan to pay for. But, you know, there's some other things I think we're going to talk about this evening that will maybe help citizens be a little more compatible with whatever the rate is in the process of how they pay for it.
Okay.
Did, did you want a consensus on that, then?
Well, our budget right now, to be honest with you, our budget reflects a 10%. That's what's going to be coming to the budget committee unless we change that.
And which, which one, the, the 10% or the?
10%.
The 10%?
Yes.
In lieu of the 15.
In lieu of the 15. But like I said, if, if there was, you know, we're definitely not seeing any impact from not doing it.
From a zero.
Zero.
And, and a hold. That would be my suggestion is, is wait and see. You know, let's not, you know, it's painful enough. Let's not have people feel any pain that ends up being unnecessary if it's not going to hold up the process.
It won't, it won't hold up the process.
I have a question, though. The 3% additional cost primarily from power. Again, you said there's some staffing difference that would offset that. Is that a perpetual, or is that just this year?
No, the, the 3% that I mentioned, that's the OMI contract. Typically, their contract goes up every year, about 3%. And that's chemical costs and, and power. The offset, yes, there's, there's, if, if the new inflationary was done, what we've lost in staff dollars out of there would more than cover that, yes.
Okay, but my question is, if that's a one-year adjustment, that next year, that, that's not there?
Correct.
We'd have to do, we'd have to make that up as well as the benefit?
No, I, no, I don't see making that up.
I don't either.
No, no, I don't, I don't see that as a makeup. If that was the case, then I think we'd recommend that you went ahead and did that. But these are, these are permanent cuts. Whereas, you know, the last, let's say, the last five years, we've had a staff member that's been paid half out of the water fund. Those funds are still coming out of the water fund, but they're not being used to pay that staff. So that, it's, it's not a one-year deal, sure, unless we hired more staff, which, that'd be the only way that you'd have to make that, that piece up.
Yeah, I would hate to do zero and then 20 because we.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, if the plant comes in, it's expensive. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no guarantee.
There is a risk that we go, we go zero and then we have to go 20 because.
It, I mean, it's unlikely.
No, I think we, personally, anyway, looking at a zero is somewhat risky, Councilor Grisell, because of that impact at 20 later. But I think we ought to at least look at inflation plus 2 or 3% on top of that to just to keep, because if we guess wrong and then we have to bump it up to 15 or 20, that's going to be a bigger impact on the citizens and the rate.
But you, you feel like the risk is fairly, fairly small that that could be the case?
Sure.
Clearly, I'm asking you to take responsibility for this.
I appreciate that.
You and you are all running.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, I do, I do. I'm willing to say that to you. I don't, I don't think it's going to cost us that much. I, I mean, I, that's, if, if I thought that there was a risk that this plant was going to be more than the 15 million that we've got budgeted out there, I would say, hey, we need to do this now because there's possible that we're going to have more later. Now, is that going to change? Probably not. I mean, we can twist our consultant and do a lot of different things with a project that big to cut a lot of costs, you know. So I don't see the, I don't, I don't see having, I mean, I can't see it being over 15%.
And if you hire a consultant in July and you get enough hammered out September, October, and you say, whoa, we've rethought that.
Oh, yeah.
It's not, it's not unthinkable that we couldn't say, let's soften that into, you know, let's think of that a little more long-term, soften that up a little bit and say, yeah, it would have been better if we did 10 because now we're going to need to do another 10. So let's do five now, or, you know, that's some way to approach that.
We will keep you apprised of that as we go. And that's, that's as we sit down with our consultant and work, work through those obstacles. One of the first things out of the gate that we're going to have to do is, is put us a preliminary cost estimate together so we can at least look at that as preliminary. And then, you know, the, the cost estimate we went off of, out of our update to our master plan, that was pretty conceptual. So we're, now we're getting closer and we're getting closer. And as we get closer, we'll know a little bit better. But that's, it's, it's a big number.
Just so I can advise the council, this is procedurally, it's a little different than I thought when I, when we got to the meeting. But are you suggesting, or is the recommendation that we change something that the council has already voted in? Have they already voted the 15%?
No, they have not.
Then that was something you were going to bring to them as an anticipated, we had talked about earlier.
Yes, yes, we, we would bring a resolution back, whatever, whatever council's preference was.
So Ron, if I hear you correctly, you're saying, let's be patient until consultants on and look at it in October, November in terms of a rate increase?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say.
I cheer up till we're November in there. I inject that. I want to be real clear. He's not scheduled to bring us anything in October, November.
I would say by this time next year, we would have a pretty good feel for what that, that's going to be. You know, we should be sitting about 50%. Our, our goal is to bid the project in December of '14 or January of '15. So we would, we would have to know at least 50% by then.
So what would a 5% increase this July and 5% potential next July do?
Well, you'd go, see, we're sitting on an average of seven units on a residential meter, 49, 16, half of that, probably $2.50 rough difference per, per month. Now, that's based on somebody that's using seven units. That's our, you know, that's what we base everything off of. If you're using 12 or 14 units, that's a little bit different.
Is seven our average?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's funny, everybody I talk to and myself is just not average, I guess.
I guess not.
I've got, I've gotten mine down to two.
Wow.
Wow.
But I just, I just can't imagine using three and a half times more than we're using. But we're very conservative. If it's yellow, let it mellow.
I've never heard that.
Thanks for sharing.
You're welcome. You're welcome for me not finishing that.
How do the other counselors feel on this? Which direction?
I think I'm kind of agreeing with the direction of what Wayne is talking about. I think if we lose ground, and most people I've talked to, if you're going to do an increase and it was split in half, it's easier to adjust on a fixed income. You know, 5 is better than 10. It gives you another year to prepare. That's kind of, that's the input I've had from people. Also, I'm a little bit worried about two years and then part of that, that 10% is going to be gobbled with inflation from next year. We're worried that there's traction there.
Is your mic on?
I can't get my mic to come on. I'm trying to talk loud, but go to the other side.
You know, I'd love to see it at zero and a hold, but I think we would be more prudent if we had some, some increase to just buffer the potential over the next year or two and till we have, I guess, better targeted information.
Okay.
Let's just, I'm personal.
I think I would prefer to see the zero, myself. I'd like to see zero. I think it'd be better for the community. I think it is a little bit of a risk, but in listening to Ron, I think that, I don't think the risks are that huge. It doesn't sound like there's a, a lot that could really happen. There might be. But I just, I feel pretty comfortable with the zero at this point. If we can do it and, and do it responsibly, I think we could. This is my thing.
I agree. I'm really uncomfortable with a rate increase unless we can justify it. And I mean, I can, I can see your point because I, because I, I'm 40% where you are, Councilor Reese Camp. I'm, I'm, I'm real close. I will really be afraid if we, if we guess wrong. But we're not just guessing. It's an educated guess. It's an educated guess to say, gosh, we, we may have enough. We're not sure. And then get back on at least an inflationary increase and possibly our last 10 to 15% next year and give people a breather. If we were going to increase, I really want to feel good about explaining why.
Yeah, and even though this is an urgent issue because of safety, I mean, this has taken years and years for this to happen anyways. And, and the relief of one year of 50%, 15%, 15%, which is compounded each year, you know, the rates have gone up quite a bit in the last few years. And I think that the people could use a break for a year. And then if we needed to, we could do a smaller adjustment later on if we had to. But it sounds like we may not have to. The price is considerably different than when the project was first started, and that was, what, five, six years ago, that that was all looked at. So those numbers are way different now.
I agree with the 0%, but I'm a little bit edgy whether it's the right way to go. I'm just kind of on the fence a little bit. I think we need to do something to relieve the, the pressure we're getting from the citizens out there and the pressure they're getting trying to pay their bills. And if we don't necessarily have to go for it, and it's an educated guess, you say, I'd like to see it zero if possible.
Yeah, then the, the impact is just basically what's the next rate increase going to be? I mean, that, that would be the impact. What is that, you know? We, we still, we're pretty comfortable. I mean, with 10%, whether that's implemented now or next year, it's, it doesn't change the face of moving our consultant forward, building the tank or any of that stuff. That's where the Northwest URD came in and really, you know, I think that was a blessing.
What, what does change by implementing 10% now versus a year from now? Where's the money going in the meantime?
It would go into our capital fund.
It would just go into that fund sitting there until we needed it?
Yeah, I mean, there's things we could do. We could probably start on connecting water lines out at the treatment plant, you know. I mean, there's, there's obviously things.
I knew you'd wanted to connect some water lines if we had that money.
The point is, we'd be spending that money on something that wasn't the water treatment plant.
Possibly.
Or maybe four, it would make a sense.
Is that the answer? Now, if we don't, if we don't raise rates now, then you're not going to have the money, you're not going to spend it. If we do raise rates now, you're going to have it, you're going to spend it on some water lines that are not the water treatment plant.
Well, to be honest with you, with the amount of projects and stuff that we've got going right now, we, I don't think we could get to any more right now unless we started hiring consultants.
I guess my point would be is that from comments that I've heard, if we, if we raise rates and spend that money on anything besides water treatment plant, we're going to get a lot of flack.
As well we should.
The water rates have increased, we've told the community, because of this treatment plant. And we need to spend every dime on that treatment plant and get it paid for and be done with it.
And, and keep in mind, these rate increases are not necessarily, the money that we're compiling over the last four years, it's to have enough to pay the debt service. So what we've been able to do in the meantime, since we have been collecting that, is, is move on some of our bigger mains and do some of that stuff, which was scheduled to be done as well. So I wouldn't, I, I don't know if it's.
My point is, is that the community believes that this, these rate increases are a direct result and for that water treatment plant, and that other issues that we had are covered other ways. And it's the increase portion that is, the expectation is for that treatment plant. That's, that's what people are telling me, and that's, I see no reason to question why they would think that. And so if we start doing other things, additional projects and things with the increase instead of the regular rate, I think we're going to have some explaining to do.
I think that's been kind of explained over and over and over again is that the rate increases are for the debt to. rate increases are for the debt to, to, for the debt service.
Yes.
And, and we've had a lot of public meetings, but, but that's a, it's a difficult concept to grasp. And so, I think, I think we have, we have expressed that, right? I think staff, I think council spent a lot of time kind of trying to get that out as to, and having a lot of meetings, but it's not.
But I'm just talking about public perception and what the public believes and what they're expecting. So, you know, we just need to be very aware of that expectation, whether we've said otherwise or not. And if we, if they're not getting it, we need to say it in a way that they can get it if we can.
And, and as part of the, the plant, I mean, we have to increase a couple of main sizes, and we've got probably close to 5,000 feet of main to put in in order to make connections for our new plant.
But we've also got rates that started at, you know, whatever rate before we did the increase, you know, that should be covering at least some portion of our capital needs.
But they were never raised when they should have been to even keep up with inflation.
There, there wasn't.
It was a pit.
That wasn't. When we started this, we basically wiped out the small diameter water main program. So, that was roughly $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That, that money there, once we started that, that money will still be there, I guess is the way to look at that to, you know, we talked about the $6 million worth of, of lines that need to be replaced in the next 10 years. That's how we based that on that. So, part of what you're seeing with the treatment plant out there, we think that we can get some of the lines built with cash that won't be involved in the bond sales. So, and what happens with that is it decreases the amount of rate that you have to charge. So, there's, we're, we're, we, we pretty much live and breathe this stuff every day, and it's, we're, we're looking at all kinds of ways that we can save it, whatever we can do.
We've got about five minutes left. So, I don't know.
About three more, two more systems.
I know you do, and I, I don't know where we need to go from here. We may have to maybe continue, and maybe before our next council meeting, we can do a work session.
Actually, I think we can get to the next two really quick.
Okay.
If, if, and if there are questions, we can go through them.
Did we come to a consensus?
We haven't, we haven't come to consensus, and I think we probably should on this, unless you guys feel different. But I'd like to at least come to some consensus.
Well, I haven't talked to any one that's had difficulty, I mean, the, those that I've talked to that had difficulty with rate increases and paying their water bill and being conservative are not expecting a decision in terms of a zero increase. They realize that there's inflation and there's debt service to be addressed, but they do look for some kind of concession. And that's why I offered the smaller amount.
Okay. Counsel, version?
I'm, I feel like I'm going to have to kind of side with Wayne. Counselor Reese Camp, I think that your, your point makes a lot of sense. I mean, I would really like to see a zero increase.
So would I.
But, so my, my vote, or, you know, voice on the consensus would be, you know, probably like you're saying, like a 5% kind of number. I'm hearing that's what you're saying.
Yes.
And, but I also feel like we need to put pretty strongly on our horizon a real conversation about very long-term planning horizons. And not necessarily that you aren't doing it and not aware of it in-house, but some of us in the community probably aren't as aware of it in a way that we can wrap our minds around and explain.
Sure.
So, I would like to make sure that, that that become a focus as we go forward to develop that kind of a, a really clear-cut explanation of this is why we're doing what we're doing, here's where the dollars are going, and why, and when, et cetera.
And I would just point out that, I mean, they were kind of looking for a consensus, but to the extent we don't have a consensus, what, what the staff could do is bring back several options when we're actually going to vote on this. There could be that debate, and the, all the counselors may be here, and, because it doesn't sound like they're going to get a firm consensus one way or the other. It may be the direction to bring back options and then have those actually adopted when a vote is taken and during, after a public comment.
Sure.
Okay. We need, we, we valuable here as well.
Would you prefer I did that in the May 8 council meeting so that we've got that addressed before the budget committee?
Why don't you do that? Yes, please. Yeah, thank you. And I was informed that we don't have a scheduled start time on that meeting. It was just going to be after, so we're okay.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll just move through it, but, but we're okay on time.
We'll fly.
But chop, chop.
Chop, chop.
We're chopping.
That's right. I might have to turn on the timer light on you.
Rob's going to do the wastewater piece.
Yeah. Any more? It's set. Okay. Okay. So, wastewater, we have implemented our last scheduled wastewater rate increase in that series of 12 that we proposed three years, four years ago, three years ago. That was this, this budget year was that, was that last of the three 12% increases. So, I mean, today's discussion will go quickly. There's no, we're not, kind of cut to the bottom, accelerate this, kind of cut to the last slide, we'll move through this quickly. As we're proposing zero rate increase in, in wastewater this year. So, revenue is looking good, so.
Would you like a consensus about?
No. So, looking at wastewater system trends, we have been, one thing that I want to point out is the one-day max treated with all the way to the right under 2012, you see 17.1. Comparing that to the other numbers in the column, that's significantly higher. That is due primarily to the completion of a project we had at the wastewater treatment plant that's allowed us to increase our capacity of the treatment plant. Therefore, we are able to take the sewage or the influent into the plant now and treat that versus holding that influent in the, in the collection system. In the past, we'd be able to take this, take the influent, attenuate it into the collection system and then meter it through the plant slowly, which prevented, which presented a lot of operational challenges in the collection system and the plant.
It's the solids?
Yeah, it's sewage, yeah. Solids and liquid.
If it's brown, flush it down.
Yeah.
I'm going to finish it.
So.
I had a hunch.
So, so that's good news, that 17.1 million gallons a day is, is, that's a success that we've had, and that's directly a result of the rate increases. The average dry weather flow at the very bottom, that is about a little over two, two, two and a half million gallons a day. That's really represents the base flow. That's just sewage. It's just coming out of the homes. That really doesn't have any, any groundwater, any, any rainfall runoff mixed in with that. That's just sewage. That's significantly lower than the one-day max treated, the column above. The difference between those two is what we call I and I, which is inflow and infiltration. That's a big number. That's a big difference. And that difference is really typical of other communities in western Oregon. Old, old pipes in the ground, old collection system, and high groundwater and a lot of run, a lot of rainfall, so.
A quick question for you back on the system trends. Why did the customer served go down for wastewater when?
It's a good point.
Water went up.
We changed accounting softwares, or not accounting, utility billing, our Sprint book system. We updated to a new version in 2011. In that process, we cleaned up a lot of the accounts and basically removed the old abandoned accounts that have been hanging on that system. And those were kind of cleaned up. So, that, if you remember, the water meter totals were five, about 5,500. Now, that falls in line with the number of sewer accounts.
Okay. Thank you.
Major projects, I'll go over this quickly. The recently completed projects, the three listed up there, large diameter clarifier, the West Side Interceptor Phase 3, and the East Rose Street. Those were all completed last year in 2012. All those together was a fairly significant dollar amount. The clarifier was about $5 million for design and construction. The West Side Interceptor, do you know what that was, Ron?
Oh, it was in the neighborhood.
Two?
About that phase.
Okay. And the Rose Street was, was lower. That was on the range of a couple hundred thousand, a little. So, future projects, we have, we're going to continue on with the West Side Interceptor future phases. One of the things we are going to, this is, this is an important point, one of the things we are going to do with the West Side Interceptor is we are not going to bond, sell bonds to construct future phases of the interceptor. We're going to do that as cash allows. We're going to save and then, and then construct those as, as, as we have the cash, which is good news. We're not going to carry that debt load into the future. We'll just.
That's very ungovernmental.
It is, it is, but we like to be innovative.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So, what do we have? Other projects? There are a number of listed there. One of the highlights really is the very bottom one, downtown sewer separation. Those have been hanging around for a number of years. Those are really DEQ regulatory driven. We need to, we're under a rule from DEQ to eliminate our combined sewers downtown. So, we still have sewers, stone drainage, and sanitary sewers that are combined, and we need to complete the order from DEQ to, to remove those sewers. This is a picture of the clarifier as it was during construction. It was 130 feet diameter, 21 feet deep, but this fun, fun project. There it is, completed. Kind of some of your dollars at work. It's kind of hard to get a scale there, but, but it's, it dwarfs the other three older clarifiers that are out there. It's kind of hard to see on the screen. That's 42-inch diameter pipe for the West Side Interceptor. We're changing pipe types on the interceptor. In the past, we've used concrete 42-inch, 54 and 42-inch concrete pipe. We're changing to a plastic pipe, so it's called the Vylon, kind of a, kind of a corrugated, think of a cardboard box with, with the corrugated rib, similar technology, smooth wall inside, smooth wall outside with ribbed reinforcement inside. It's lighter, easier to put in. So, we're, we're trying to reduce our, our inflow into the system, and we think the plastic pipe may help with that.
And how's the longevity on that?
It, from the information, that's one of our concerns, and the information from the suppliers and other municipalities who have put it in, it seems that, indicate that it's, the life is just as good as concrete, so.
Not bad.
Yeah. So, wastewater financial status, we, in fiscal year 13 this year, we are on track to collect what we have budgeted. The past two years, we, being conservative as we are, understated our revenue. Basically, we scheduled a, a 12% rate increase. So, instead of increasing our, our revenue by 12% in the budget, we did 10, we did a little bit less, 10, 11, and not knowing if we're going to collect all that revenue, we did in wastewater. Wastewater is billed a little bit differently than water. Water is direct consumption, and wastewater is based on your winter average. So, you determine what your, what your water use is during the winter, and then your wastewater bill is based on that winter consumption and is billed at that rate all year. So, therefore, makes for a much more stable income stream, revenue stream in wastewater. So, wastewater proposed increase was highlighted in yellow. The current rate for six units, which is the average winter use, is 59, just under $60. 2014, we're proposing no increase, not even an inflationary increase at this point. That's just, we recommend just holding, holding the status quo. Revenue is looking good in wastewater. We're building the West Side Interceptor with cash versus bonding those projects. So, we're recommending just holding, holding, holding status quo, give the rate payers a little bit of a break. That, of course, is up to council's discretion. We can, you know, we can, we can do inflationary if, if that's something the council wants to do. So, and what's next? That's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the stormwater. You can see, basically, here's our stormwater projects. Let me start by saying this utility was created in 2010 by council. It was basically created to fund cleaning maintenance and to start a capital fund for replacement upgrade projects of the storm nature. So, that, that gives you a little background on that, and we've got a whole bunch more if you want. Basically, Jason's crews are out on a daily basis cleaning storm. We're doing a lot, we've done a lot of in-house stuff to do, replace pipe. We're going to do some more this summer. We're at the next slide. Sherman Street Box Covert. I don't know how many people have been over on Sherman Street, but there's a, it's kind of a jump right now, I guess. We had speed humps out there. We're going to put any box covert in there as part of the West Side Interceptor project, and Storm's going to pay for a portion of that. It's going to pay for a portion of Hob Street jointage project that'll be coming to council, I believe, May 8th for approval to bid. A lot of that is also, that Hob Street is going to be funded by SDCs as well. And then, kind of financial status on the waste, on the stormwater, it's a pretty small utility. You see, this year, we've budgeted about $400,000, and we're pretty much in line to collect that. I mean, maybe a few thousand off, but pretty much in line to collect that. We are proposing this year an inflationary adjustment to stormwater. We didn't propose it in the other two, but this one, there was very, very little staff, or at least the staff that was assigned to that, that's now gone, is, was not assigned to that fund. So, we're trying to keep, keep in pace with that. What does that mean? It's about a nickel difference on the storm bill for, for an average residential. So, we are proposing to do a 2.3%. We will bring that back in a resolution for council also on May 8th. I think that's, that's kind of a nutshell on the storm system. We've, we've done a lot of cleaning. I shouldn't say we, I, I take credit for that. It's Jason and his guys that do all that. But we work closely with him, and if we need to design something real quick, we're doing a lot of in-house stuff because there isn't a lot of money there. So, we buy materials and use our crews to put them in the ground and get done what we can get done, and it's actually working really well so far, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
I think that sums it up.
Good work. Appreciate that. And then, soon, anything else that you guys have at all? Okay.
I think that's it.
And then, do you mean if you'd come up, we could do your part real quick? Maybe not real quick.
Yeah, that always the simple part, and that comes the hard part. Complicated part.
Yes.
So, the mayor sent me an email last week to ask for a couple of questions. So, the information I provided tonight is in response to that email. I provided a couple of good things here. First one is handout number one.
It's on.
No.
Hello? I thought it was on. Okay. Is handout number one, handout number one, it compares our old collection process to the new collection process, and for collecting, for, at the front counter, for collecting bills. In both cases, you'll notice that the bills were all due on the first, due and payable on the first of each month. We usually try to have them out, they're usually in people's boxes by then. We try to get it mailed by about the 25th. In both cases, they're past due on the 15th of the month. The major change between the two processes that came at that point. The major change between the two processes that came at that point, in the old process, they had like a three-week wait period, so they didn't have to, there was no delinquent letter sent out until, I believe it was the 3rd to the 10th of the next month. In the new process, we've cut that down to a three-day period, then we send out the delinquent notices. And then, in the old process, they had 10 business days before we put door hangers, and then a real short time to, to water shut off. The door hanger was put on, like Monday, your water would shut off on Wednesday. In the new process, we've changed that from the delinquent notice, there's a week later is the door hanger, then we put a week later to shut off. So, we've added more time where people couldn't even pay. The main reason we did this, and the biggest result was, in the old process, by the time you got shut off, you were three months behind in the bill, and now, that could be a $500 bill for some people, and there's just no way they can pay it. Their water's off for a few days, because the requirements are, you have to pay all your outstanding bills and all your penalties before services turn on. And that, that was just a hole that people were buried in. Under the new process, it's down to two months plus penalties, so it seems to be working, which we'll see on the next couple of pages. The next page is just a copy of the letter that was, this was included in the bills back when we started this whole process, explaining the whole process to everybody. So, then we come to handout number two, there are number three, which is kind of the data here. The top one compares all of our notices that we've sent out, starting in 2007 through 2013. What I wanted to point out on this is if you look at the trend here, the numbers were trending up before we even put the new process in place. You know, so, there's been some questions, did we put the new process in? That caused a lot of people to be more delinquent and all that? It's not. If you look at this, the numbers were climbing already. And a matter of fact, I think when we get to the end of 2013, we're going to see the numbers have dropped down, because we're seeing a change in that, in the other direction. So, this process, the new process was put in in January 2012. Some of the things that had an effect on the rates and the changes here, not only the process, we had a really bad economy, we had rate changes, which we just talked about. There were some pretty big rate changes in the last few years. Storm drain bills, for the first couple of years of storm, from 2010, 2011, storm drain bills were so small that they didn't affect. About 2012, the people who didn't pay their storm drains all of a sudden got over the limit where they started getting delinquent notices. So, that caused a jump in our delinquent notices, because all of a sudden, they got a bill saying, "Hi, you're delinquent," because they just ignored them for a couple of years, until they got up there. And then, we had the change in the collection process. So, that, all that is built into that first one showing our numbers. The second one, John asked me today, "Well, can we show how much we build versus how much we've actually collected each year?" So, I went through, and we pulled up from fiscal year 2010 to current now. It's interesting, for the first two years, we collected about 96%. Then, in 2012, when we went through this whole process of change in our procedures, it actually dropped down to about 91%, because there was a lot of confusion and stuff. And then, currently, this year, in the first, in 2013, for the first nine months, we're at 105%. So, we're actually collecting some of the back, the back of the delinquent accounts and the current, so we're doing a lot better now in collecting our outstanding bills, which, again, I want to point to, partly we believe this because of the process, because we're staying with people and not letting them get far behind before, before they go to get shut off. So, a lot of people just aren't getting there. It's been, it's been really, local out of customers on that.
I got to think that some of that is, is that repossessed homes are beginning to sell again.
Some of that, and then...
But that you're going to get some revenue that, for some means that you...
They're collecting some lees on those things out there also, so we're getting lees paid off, yes.
Yes.
So, that's part of the, that's the past that they were collecting, the older accounts that they were collecting. So, and then, the bottom part is our, is our lockoffs. And I reduced, number three down there, and to compare it to 2013, I just took the first three, three months of each year. And so, in 2010, it was 39, 39, 33, and what, 34. So, our lockoffs are staying pretty, you know, lower than our, than the past averages, and we've been seeing that. And yet, there's, the first three months of the year, lockoffs are a little higher than the rest. I think our average fell, dropped from 34 down lower this year also, because we usually see a big increase January, February in lockoffs, because Christmas, people get a little bit behind, and so, they fall behind a little bit. So, I'm thinking about the time, the end of this year, we'll see that number will have dropped even further on the average for the whole year, so.
One number I didn't see, or maybe I'm just not looking correctly, and we didn't, I didn't ask for it specifically, but it would be interesting to see, is how much more income we're receiving on the late fees as that we did before? Do you know if there's a difference?
I can get that.
I was just...
It's basically, if you want, just doing the math, it's $10 for a delinquent notice and $15 for a shut off.
Okay.
So, for the shut, for the, for the door hanger, so.
Well, I could do that math. It's 25 bucks.
So, it's $25 on those two, and then, if they actually get shut off, then it's $50, which includes having it shut off and turning it back on.
I was just curious if there was more people under the new policy that were getting the $25 fee than there were before the policy was changed? That's what my question is.
I don't believe so. You know, like I said, in 2012, the numbers were not, and I...
Dean, I remember you and I looked at that probably about the middle of last year. At that point, we were actually collecting a little less in late fees and lockoff fees than we had the year before. Now, it wasn't a big difference, and that trend may or may not have continued for the rest of the year, but...
Yeah. And if we get to the end of the year and our lockoffs averages go down, well, that means we've collected less fees, or less penalties. And we do keep track of those differently now. It used to be in the past, they were rolled in with the water, just right into water. We broke those out a couple of years ago, so they actually have a line for penalties, so we could track them better. So, so we could look at that over the last couple of years. I don't know if it was, if it was 11 or 12 when we did that, to start tracking them better.
It's so hard. I find, I find our new schedule to be too harsh, so I'll just say that. But I, it's so hard that, because it's so easy for a bill to be misplaced, especially a bill that's variable, and, and the city doesn't just, I can't have the city just take it out of my account. Let me give you my checking account number, and just take it out. Tell me what day you're going to take it out.
I have the phone if you want to do that.
I called once asking to do that. They said, "Well, you can't just have it taken out. You can do, you can do something else."
You can do it online. No, we do direct debits. Matter of fact, we do quite a few of those every month. It's went from about, I think when I first started, we were doing about $5,000 a month. We're close to almost $20,000 a month that we do just direct debits, and those are done, if the bill's due on the 15th, we take it out of your bank account on that day.
Whoever I wanted to do it at the time, whoever was working was not able to help me. I can't remember how I wanted to do that. But it wasn't, so, to be fair, I can't remember how I wanted to do that. I just find that by the time I've misplaced a bill and, and not even thought about it, it's, and the time I get the next one, the bill arrives, the door hanger arrives, I'm shut off. I mean, like, well, I just realized it when I opened my bill, that, how did that even, how did that even, was that even possible? But it is, it is bam, 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 but with the timing that we currently have, and it is outrageous to me that we couldn't do, I don't know, I just, I hate it.
Well, like I said, under the old process, there was a longer time in there, but we had people who got too far behind, and even the agencies we sent them to won't pay that much money. Once they get so far behind, you know, all the help agencies aren't going to pop up $500 to get you out of the hole. They're going to pay 25 here, 50 there, you know, and it got really hard.
And that, and there's going to be people that are, you know, that are in a bad spot or otherwise don't manage their money, but everybody else has to have a system that doesn't work designed around those people that's, that would be abusive or otherwise could not make it work, and I find that, I just hate it.
The concern that I have too is that I don't feel that it's consistent with the other utilities, gas, phone, electric.
We're easier than some of the other utilities.
I completely disagree with you. I disagree.
I would tell you, one of my staff got a door hanger because she didn't pay her bill, and it wasn't just a little thing. She got this door hanger real quick, and they, they put another door hanger on a week later, and it was $125.
I don't know what utility it was, but I have...
It was what I was, yeah, we do in town.
Pacific Northwest, the gas, and...
It was an electric company.
The electric, both of those, if you're a month behind, it gets tacked on to your next bill, you get it paid, you get up to date, and you're okay. The problem I have is that so many people are out of jobs right now and struggling, and I have a small business, and I know other people do, and you don't always get money in the beginning of the month. We don't have an alternative for that, so it really hurts people that can't pay until the 20th of the month. Every month, I have to pay 25 bucks a month, and I know it's, I'm not the only person that does that, and it's just automatic, because I don't have money necessarily until my jobs come in. And I know other people are doing, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just expressing, I've heard this from a lot of people that I've talked to. Their concern is just it's so fast, and like you said, it's just quick. It's boom, boom, and you've got the door hanger.
Well, and also, it's, I understand the rationale for the penalty fees, but another way of looking at that, it's never made a lot of sense to me to kick a person when they're down. I mean, the reason they didn't pay the bills is usually because they didn't have the money, so let's charge them some more. And, you know, the, I'm not sure the best way around that, I'm, I hear what Paul says, I think he's right. I do think Rebecca's right, it's a little too harsh. I'm not sure I know the correct answer, but I do think it's, it's a little bit difficult to deal with sometimes, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure the right answer exactly, but I'd like to know more about, you know, was it Paul that asked about, you know, the dollars involved? You know, I'd like to understand the true fiscal impact of lates and, you know, what you can do to encourage people, you know? Is there another way of looking at this? I mean, I don't feel like I have a recommendation tonight, except that I think there is a sense of, you know, difficulty with this, and I'm not exactly sure where it lands, but, yeah, I mean, does it work to collect it? Yeah, but you can collect money from a bank if you have a big enough gun, you know? It's not, you know, the fact that we're simply collecting bills and get 105% is not the whole answer to this, because, you know, simply, you know, we do exist to serve this public, not just get their money. And, you know, I know we have to get their money, but we need to keep the whole thing in mind.
Just, just a little bit as far as how we figure the amount of the fees, which are always approved by the council on an annual basis, is we look at, you know, how long does it take an employee to go out? Well, staff first, okay, here's all these late people, we need to do door hangers, and then call the utility, one of the utility workers and go out and hang them, and so we calculate that approximate cost of time and materials. Same thing with sending late notices, same thing with the lockoff and the turn back on. And I think in every case, no, obviously, the council can set that at any amount they want or no amount, but in every case, what we actually charge in those fees, I'm not talking about the timing, I'm just talking about the amount, is actually a little bit less than what our actual costs are to do that, you know, hang that door hanger, send out that late bill, late notice.
I want to clarify that my, my issue is not with our fee, because, you know, for me personally, I believe, you know, you've got, you've got to equalize the system at some, at some point, you know? You know, if I'm late, I'm happy to pay that. It wasn't convenient for me, or I lost it, or whatever. I understand the fee. My, my big issue is with our timeline. It's, it's, it's too aggressive. I think fees are necessary. It takes the city a lot of money, and that means, you know, me, as a, as a regular rate payer, I'm having to pay more into the system, because you don't ever pay your bill, and I get a, we put in all this extra time. I get that. So, that's not my, I just want to clarify that.
I agree with you.
I certainly appreciate the other utilities process and their system of billing, because I'm a busy individual, and I sometimes forget Pacific Power or Northwest or both, and I don't have to worry about the hanger, because it's going to be on my next bill, and then I pay it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But I realize there are individuals that can cause them, or a certain percentage of our citizens, that that can cause some difficulty and grief. And I don't know what the answer is, but I concur, it's, it's aggressive, but I don't know that I have an answer either.
You'd be surprised at how many of those people who are on this, this list, that they'll find out, tell us, "I don't pay your bill till you hang the door, they're in my door." Because, because without, like, when it gets real windy, sometimes they'll blow off. We put duct tape, and it's not there, well, I didn't get the door hanger, so I didn't pay the bill. It's unbelievable. It's like, it's irresponsible, but that's what they do. And how many of we get, and that's, that's their notice. Oh, this, this bill's the one that's yelling, now I'll go pay that one, and that's what they pay. Because, because there's been a time when we've chosen not to do this because of manning or something, and they just don't pay the bill.
I understand there's some people out there like that, but you have to look at the majority of the people, and we need to be considerate to the majority of our customers, and that's, that's why I'm talking about. I think the majority of the people, Wayne, myself, you know, all of us, it's like, we need some time sometimes to pay that bill, and it doesn't mean we're not going to pay it, and we're not playing the door hanger game, you know, waiting for that. Maybe there's some nice timeframe in between the two, when you said there was three months, maybe it's a two-month period or something a little longer before the major things happen. But I think that we need to address this and look at it, and maybe even get some public comment on it. I just, we need to do something on it, I feel.
I will tell you, one thing we've been looking at, and it's not because of, I don't think the thing's too aggressive or whatever, but it's because of the mail. We have a lot of complaints that once we mail the delinquent notices out, that people don't, that they don't come fast enough, because of the mail. And we are looking at changing that week in between there to either a week or two weeks, so that would move things back a little bit. Not, not changing the delinquent notice, you know, that was still within the three days, but changing between there, because the mailman can't get the things delivered. So, we're all looking at that. We do hear complaints about that, and we've been talking about that, so.
My personal perspective is, obviously, I haven't been vocal enough on this, huh? Sorry. I don't mean to attack you at all, because I do a good job. I just, I think there needs to be some time between the second billing, like you were saying, Wayne. I think I need to be able to get my second bill. You just sent out a late notice, but I think I need to be able to get my second, my next month's bill, and realize last month's is still on there, and have some time to react to that without, you know, without. And I, and I equate it to, in my profession, repossessing vehicles, right, which we do a lot. And some people are great to work with, and some people are not great to work with, but we cannot, we cannot develop the whole loan program around those people who will push and push and push and abuse the system. And then, again, we can't repossess every time somebody's at 30 days late. Some people won't make their car payment until they're three car payments behind, and now, they're so buried, they can't, you know? And the difference there is, we've got collateral, but, but we're mostly upside down in that collateral. You know, eventually, you know, we could slap a lien on the, on the home, and the home is sold, and we'll be made the whole at some point. So, whether they can afford it or not, it is what it is, and that's what you agreed to. I just...
But you have a good point. So, look at the list, and 95% of our customers are on time. There's very few who get delinquent notices all the time. So, most of our customers are doing things correctly. It's, it's the other 15% or 10% that are having a problem.
True, but when I stub my toe, you can't create that process. I can't create my collections process around the few people who will never make a car payment. I need to be able to, you know, treat it in a human way with these people until, I can't stop treating people who are having difficulty making their car payment as, you know, inhuman. I don't know, I think we kind of dehumanize it in a way.
That's what I was saying, you know, because this is working for 95% of the customers.
5% we've got to talk about.
Yeah, so, but, so you're trying to build, you're trying to build the whole process to satisfy a minority, a small number.
No, I'm specifically talking about the collections process. I'm not talking about creating our lending program in my scenario, not your lending program around that. I'm talking about, this is 5%, which is 100% of my collection process, so let's talk about the 5%, which is 100% of our problem, or why we even have this in place. That's, you know, we, you know, you can't, some of those people are a lot easier to deal with than others, don't you think?
Oh, yeah.
The very difficult ones to deal with, you can't create your whole process around them. That's... them. That's, I guess, my point. I'm not articulating that very well.
Well, the other question I would have, and I don't know if there's any way to get the data for this, but if we have 5% of the population that is habitually late or often late, how many of those are, you know, six months unemployed, you know, nine months unemployed and just having a difficult time in any moment? How many of those have a cash flow cycle like Paul was describing that just makes it difficult consistently? How many of them are just deadbeats and never going to pay their bills? You know, how do we know these things? And, you know, how do you make that workable for the people who are really trying and just can't seem to make it, without just, is there a way to do that and just not fill them all, they're 5%, we'll just let them go and, because 95 are doing fine?
I wouldn't know how to get that data.
Well, I'm not asking for the data, I'm not saying, but I'm saying, you know, there are those divisions of types within that 5%, and, you know, we're really clobbering the folks that really would like to do better and are just struggling to do it.
And just occasionally are out of town and, oh, gosh, maybe that pays.
And we take care of those ones. Because if all of a sudden you have a late payment, you'd be surprised how many that I waive each month. Because if you come in and say, man, I just, I screwed up, well, look at your account and go, well, yeah, man, you're late all month, waive it, you know. And we do that all the time. You know, if you've got one, you've missed one in the last nine months, okay.
Yeah, but what if you, what if you have the small business?
Because you just missed up.
Who's, you know, revenue cycle makes it so he can't pay his bills till late in the month, and he's late, you know.
If he's late every month, then you don't waive it.
If he's late, you know, eight out of 12 months, you're not going to give him any help, and yet he's always getting the bill paid, you know, fully, he's just running a week or two behind everybody else, and we just penalize this guy.
I just want a couple more weeks after the second billing.
You know, and looking at 90% that are doing it right, 95% are doing it right. The problem is, we don't know how many of those people had to do things that were very difficult to get that to happen, that might not be happy that they had to pay that. So we don't necessarily have 95% that are happy people out there, and I would really rather see people a little happier when they're paying their bills so they can adjust it or whatever they would need to do. And I mean, that's not our goal, is to make just happy people, but getting them upset over this, and I've had people come to me specifically on this part, it's not so much even the money, it's just that, you know, it's boom-boom-boom, you owe the money and whoop, your water's turned off within a month. It's just fast, and I think that's the problem, and it just doesn't look good to people.
John, help me with the history when we implemented this. I think council asked for some research in terms of other communities, and we did that, and I don't, you know, recall what everybody was doing. But as I recall, the new, the new program that we went to, you know, a little over a year ago, wasn't, every city was different. I mean, some cities, you know, how fast you had, you had to pay the bill, you know, how fast or how quickly it became delinquent and you got a late fee was different, and how quickly they locked off was different, and how quickly the door hanger. Almost everybody had a similar process, late fee, door hanger, lock off. But the timing between that and the time the average customer got the bill was all over the map, pretty much all over the map. You know, I think what we have is not very exceptional, but probably definitely, you know, it's, as far as if you grade them in overall strictness or rapidity, you know, we would be probably not at the very top, but one of the more strict ones, yeah, no question.
There's no adage in business we've all heard, and that's that the customer's always right. And what that means is that, not that the customer, you know, doesn't want to pay your bill, that they don't have to, it means that you bend over backwards to accommodate the customer. And one of the problems I feel like we have governmentally is that this customer's pretty much captive, they don't have any options. They can't go to the competing water service and say, I'll work with this one if I can't get along with that one. The only choice they have is to leave town. And I'm concerned that we don't overly take advantage of that monopoly, that we are sensitive to the fact that these folks are our customers, that we exist to serve them, even when they're difficult. You know, Rebecca, with your loan scenario, you know, you have the difficult people, but the way you treat the difficult ones filters back into your reputation with the good ones. And, you know, no, we don't legally have to, we can go get it, but I'm just saying, you know, we really ought to be sensitive to all these issues the way we would be to a customer who could go to a, you know, some competition somewhere if there was any.
And I agree with Mayor Paul. I think there's a, maybe a larger percentage of that 95% that are paying that are probably having considerable difficulty, and maybe they are abusing another account to accommodate, you know, the water sewer billing, but I doubt that those 95% are all very happy customers. How do we accommodate and satisfy, I think maybe just some time in between? I don't know what that does to that 5% or the 95%.
I mean, people who are going to have a tough time paying their bill are always going to have a tough time paying their bill. You know, the only thing you could possibly do to make life easier for them is to reduce the fees, and that means reduce the effort. You know, you're always going to have to cut the water off at some point and make them catch up. I mean, that's always going to happen, you know, or you just give people free service. But, you know, the question is not, do we quit serving people? The question is, when do we cut it off and how can we help them stay current? And, you know, the easiest way to do that is the thing we need to look for, and, you know, so whatever that is, it's going to be the lowest cost to the customer way, you know, and I'm not saying we never have a fee, but if we didn't, if we changed the policy for, and I'm not advocating this, but for example, if we just didn't send out hangers, if we just sent out, you know, a notice in the bill and say, this is your hanger effectively, you wouldn't have to pay somebody 10 bucks, go hang the thing. You could save that cost just by doing it a different way. Now, is it effective? I don't know, but again, at some level, it's their responsibility.
Right, that's one of the comments I was going to make. We have, and staff has a cost related to the time to do that by whomever that is, but I guess my opinion is that that person's on staff and paid anyway, whether they're hanging or shutting off or turning back on. So that's a fixed cost to us. And so is there something around the penalty fee that we could look at in terms of doing it differently, like you pointed out, or having that at all?
Sure.
But the fee itself, if you reduce it, or if it doesn't feel like a penalty, you'll have more, which means you will need more staff, which, I mean, you know, if we didn't have, I hate to keep using my, if we didn't have collection costs, if we didn't have collection fees and late fees on an auto loan, we couldn't have as many staff, and there would be more abuse. There has to be something to you to say.
Don't do this.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a, I mean, it's a penalty, it's to disincent you from making a late payment, but if you choose to make your payment late, if you need to consistently make your payment late, well, that's okay, and we understand. There's a fee involved with everything we have to do to collect that. And we do have more staff on, you know, you have more staff than you would need to if you didn't have those things going on, if you didn't have to manage those late accounts.
Another way of looking at the thing, Dean, you do have, you always have the lock off. Let's say you did it three months later, four months later, you know, some period of time, you're going to, the marginal cost of providing service to a given customer is virtually zero. I mean, it just doesn't cost us any cash out of pocket to turn the water and let them use however many units they're going to use this month for that next customer. It just doesn't change a significant amount. The thing that we are in the business of doing is collecting everybody's fair share of providing the service. So.
Yes.
And, you know, the question is, how much responsibility are you going to put on the customer? And if you put the maximum responsibility on the customer, you say, okay, again hypothetically, you give them four months and we cut you off till you're caught up. Now, that's harsh, it doesn't give them the early warnings and incentives and handholding to get caught up early so they don't get that far behind, but you also at that level reduce their total fee to catch up. Or you can charge them a lot of fees, help them stay up, you know, babysit them and charge them fees. You know, to throw a dart at that somewhere and pick the right balance is the thing we're faced with. In terms of what it's going to cost us out of pocket as an organization, as an agency, it's virtually zero. Because, you know, that one, what we lose is the revenue if those people aren't paying their bills, we don't have cost by providing service.
The other thing is, I don't think, I don't know because I've never had it turned off, but the other utilities do door hangers, if I'm mistaken. I don't think so. I think they just tell you in your bill that you're past due, and then you finally get like a, you don't do it by this date, just get your electricity turned off, and then they come out and do it.
Consumer power does, that's the one that my staff.
They do a door hanger.
That's when she got.
Okay.
And they do two. So they did one and they came back a week later and hung another one.
Okay.
$125.
Okay, well, I have another.
The people's attention.
I think, they have to do something with their door hanger, because I have to go back and check the law, but I think Oregon law says, before we can turn your water off, we have to give you, I think we have to give you a door hanger, we don't have to give you a delinquent notice. But I think the door hanger is in Oregon law.
Okay.
And I have to go back and check that again. But I think we looked like we fought with somebody on that, and even when we turn off an apartment building, we have to hang one, I believe, on each door now. Revolution is hanging on the managers, and now we're supposed to put it on, they all have to have notice that their water's going off.
Okay.
One thing I have a question about is, in this day and age of computers, it seems like it would be a good thing to say, when you turn your water on, do you want the first or do you want the 15th? And have a timing that kicks on the first, if that's what you chose with some timeframe, and one that kicks in on the 15th, if that's what you chose. I mean, sometimes you get a car loan, right, when do you want it? You want the first month, middle month, and that fits people's schedule better. And with a computer, I would think it's going to count off, and maybe it would even spread out collections so you didn't have everybody paying at one part of the month, you'd have them spread out more evenly, et cetera, but I don't.
I consider that's a good idea. Have you considered that, Dean?
I think your costs are going to go up, because the way, when we use, somebody just sent out our bills, we're so small, we only have 5,000 bills, so it's real easy to run them. If we had 15,000 or 20,000 or 50,000 like Albany, you have multiple times, but I don't know anybody who has 5,000 bills or 6,000 that does more than one run. That's a really small number.
That makes sense to me.
So what's the cost of that, Dean?
Um.
To run 2500.
To send the bills out each month, we've got, we get a bill for about $3,000, and $2,000, $2,500 of that is postage for sending the bills. The rest is just the fees for mailing it, for print and I'm in front of the house.
I kind of like it.
Doing that in-house, we're still, we have services.
We as a company, I'm bent.
Very contradictory.
And I don't know what staging the due date does for those that are having that hanger problem. It helps someone that's, the revenue is staged at a different time of the month.
And that's one thing we did when we first started this whole process, because we implemented this in January of 2012, but we used, like, we gave the folks, like, it was usually three or four months to turn their accounts around, where we waived a bunch of fees in those months too. Like, some of the social security people, they're saying, I get my check on this day, your bill comes here, I'm always late. No, 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 you need to use this bill back here. We said, well, if you pay a little extra this month, a little extra that month, a little extra that month, then you flipped it. And a lot of them did that, and they're perfectly fine. That's why when you look at 2012, all of a sudden we had a big influx of our delinquent notices, because the people after that four months, when they send out a whole bunch of notices, went, you were serious. But we worked with a lot of people to turn their bills around. I can't, I can't tell you how many people I did financial counseling at the front counter, just helping them. And we did a lot because of that. And I learned through this, you know, a lot of people here, they come up here and say, my social security check doesn't come till this time and you're always late. Well, the problem is, I learned through this whole process, the social security comes every week of the month. There's a, it's based kind of your birthday, when your birthday is, some come the first Wednesday, some come the second Wednesday, some come the third. So if I fix it for the one, I'm going to, sorry, make the other ones mad. Except for this one, then the other one's mad. So no matter who I get, a 30-year senior is going to be mad at you, because their payments come at different times of the month.
Good idea that we extend the time. Then it could help those people.
But if I extend the time, then I make the other one mad. It doesn't matter, I can give you three months, and they're always going to say, if I say, your bill's not due till here, but my check doesn't come here, okay, well, I'm going to send the bill here. My check doesn't come, and they always go to the next check. Doesn't matter when you put it, so check always comes after that. They can't use the first one.
I'd like to.
So we've worked with a lot of people on that.
I know, Dean, you made a comment that you and staff are considering a broader timeframe between the hanger and.
Between the delinquent notice and then sending out the door hangers. Because we send the delinquent notices through the mail, and we get a lot of people saying, I didn't get it until yesterday. And we don't have, you know, because mail now has to go to Salem or Portland or, and then back, and, so we're looking at adding that. There's a week there, but we're looking at, I think with the time, it has to go to either a weekend or two weeks to add more time there.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to implement that and see if that makes any changes, or?
I would like to see if.
Comments first, Mayor?
I can say. Comments will be in the next meeting.
But I was wondering before you made that decision.
Right.
It was a work session.
It's a work session only, we won't be making any decisions.
There's no decisions, yeah. What I was hoping is that maybe we could just come to a consensus to have them come back with maybe a couple options on this, since you understand what, it seems like several of us have voiced, the timeframe seems to be an issue. Maybe come back with a couple options for us.
I think it might make a lot of sense to try to get some public comment on this issue.
Agreed.
There seems to be enough conversation going around town about it. I'm sure there's some folks that, if they had the opportunity, would come and voice their opinion about what they'd like to see.
The only thing I would request is, whatever time change we change it to, don't get it back out where they've got three or four months bills due, because their water will be shut off and they just can't get it back on, because it's too big of a bill. That was one of the moving factors of doing this.
Two months might be the magic number, I don't know, and that's what I want to see.
That's what I'm saying.
We need to look at it, because, yeah, three or four months, maybe that's too long, but still two months, it's a whole lot better than one month for people that are struggling.
No, but by the time they're shut off, they have a two-month bill. You know, because we bill them afterwards. So we send out the first bill, and then by the time they get the, their shut-off notice, we've already sent, we're processing and sending out the next bill. So, and we do that all at the same time, your door, your door things, so they've already used two months of water, and so they've got a two-month bill that they have to pay to get it turned back on at this point now.
And I understand that, but I think that's the customer's responsibility at that point. It's just, we're trying to make it for the majority of people as convenient as we can, and then there's going to be some people that just aren't going to pay.
Yeah. Well, and also, there's legitimate arguments to be made for just about every point on the spectrum here, and none of the arguments are fallacious, they're valid. So I think maybe with an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this, there probably is no perfect spot to draw the lines, but maybe if we get a line that at least everybody's the happiest with or the least unhappy with, and give folks a chance to have some input, that might be the best way to be responsive.
Do you want to come back with this on the agenda and just have a public hearing, or do we want something, some other way of public input?
Well, I'm not sure, you know, based on our attendance tonight over rates and discussion, how are we going to get to public input?
That's a good question.
Well, I say we go online, we, you know, let people know, put it in the paper.
Yeah, let them try.
You know, yeah, just to try. If people don't want to comment, they don't want to comment.
Okay.
So at least, at least put it out there, give people the opportunity.
Yeah.
And, yeah, if you would come back with us, Dean, at the next meeting with some ideas, some different choices that we would have, some ideas that you have. Oh, that's actually the eighth, isn't it? I forgot.
How about June?
Yeah, let's do the June.
But we have to get the budget done.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it. Well, we need to have enough time also to get public input, so.
And Dean, if you think, if you get that statute that you think.
I'll look for it again.
I found a couple of articles where different cities in Oregon have stopped doing door hangers, so I don't know, maybe it's not a law anymore, but if you find it, let me know.
Okay, I'll look. I know we, somebody, somebody who we didn't hang one for somebody, you know, putting us to it, we had, and, actually, I think I had the Secretary of State, but the Attorney General called me about that about four years ago when we started this all out. And we had, we talked, you know, somebody from their office. So I know it was out there, I don't know where it's at now. And I know it's out there about, you have to hang it on, notify everybody in the apartment building before you can shut the apartment building off. So, because we used to just hang it on one and we were told we have to let everybody know.
Okay, so bring us some ideas for that meeting. Okay. So bring us some ideas for that meeting and then we'll, in the meantime, solicit input from the community. And we'll have public input at that meeting also.
So I'd love it, if you guys have any ideas, to let me know. Because I know when we first did this, this evolved, we probably had 10 different versions of it in this time period of changing times and changing dates and everything moved. So if you guys have any ideas where you think we can do it, you know, let me know that too and we'll work on an option.
Okay. And so we can move on, let's look at that last page.
And the last page, oh, the last page, it has to do with the process we use when we're notified that somebody, a customer's passed away. When somebody comes in and says, "Aunt Maybelle's passed away, I'm now the executor," you know, we move it to the estate of, and then we ask the person for a power of attorney or something saying, "They're responsible for this," so we know who's going to be responsible for the bill. And like the case of that one guy that was here.
Last meeting.
Yeah, meeting a two ago. You know, he goes, "I had a power of attorney, but when she died, that power of attorney ends. Now I have to wait for the will to be, whatever they do with the will then, it takes like 30 days before he can access any of their bank accounts to finish, to pay bills again." And we just go in and we waive a fee at that time. And we did that for him.
We offered to waive his fees, I remember.
Yeah, and we offered to waive, and I'm sure we did. I don't know where he was coming from. But, but we do that, we waive the fees and that 30 days or 60 days till they have access back to the funds to pay the bill. Because we don't expect, you know, if you're taking care of, you know, your friend's account, well, I don't expect you to pay his bill until his money comes, you get to his money. So.
And I'm wondering if maybe we can get this put on the water page on the website and, or maybe reworded a little bit, but actually have it. So if people are looking and they're from out of town and they're trying to deal with a deceased family, they can look that up and find. I know this isn't a ton of people, but it's just, it frustrates me when I see a person that has a person who's passed away and they're dealing with all this. It would be nice if we just had a simple thing.
Yeah.
And are the employees all aware of this, this process?
Yeah, yeah. The one problem we're having, and we're trying to go through this now, is, you know, if something's moved into the estate of somebody, and then you kind of go, "Man, they've been using water there for six months." You know, it's because the niece or the nephew or somebody moved in. And we're trying to figure out, we want to get it out of the estate of and get into, you know, who's really responsible. You know, unfortunately, when somebody passed away, there's people who just want to die in that house and live there, and we have that issue. So we work a lot with that, trying to get it out of the estate, get the people who are living there to actually sign up. So.
Maybe it'd be simpler just to, you know, do something that's probably less precise but functional and just say, if somebody says, you know, "This house has been vacated by somebody who's deceased," then instead of having them come up with a whole bunch of documentation to prove it, just simply watch the meter. And if it goes over zero, then they don't get the rate. If it's zero, then they get the benefit. You know, that would be, that would be simpler for everybody, you know, and probably would account for 98% of the issue. And then if the niece moves in and, you know, is using water, then it doesn't count. And, you know, zero rate meters get a minimum charge.
Usually when somebody passes away, though, there's somebody who's been assigned to take care of any of their bills.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, but if we're going to make it simple.
We just think of who that person is so we can make sure the bills to the right person.
If it's going to be something simple, they can just, you know, make it easy.
Okay.
We have a similar issue with snowbirds who are around for several months in the winter and, you know, people have asked about that, you know, can we get this, you know, we're not using any water of any kind for this period of time. And, you know, there's probably some conversation to be had about that issue as well.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll adjourn the work session and we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll get into the regular session.